I did treasure for two years before I was appointed as actual treasurer. There was the other point where we offered Leo the position. So, our history is you don't have to advertise, but you can. There's a couple, there's two options.
Because it becomes a mayor appointed council confirmed.
Yes.
That's correct.
The body can hire whoever they want.
Yes.
Or whatever they want to do.
Okay, just going back to, this is my agenda from the last meeting. Direction for you to propose a plan and suggested amendments to the city code if needed to transition supervisor to approve upper. Plan amendments to be brought back. Okay, so, so you have a plan and Leo mentioned about amendments. So what is the plan? Because the plan, like you, I'll let you go on, you go on the plan and I will answer my questions after you're done.
That is the plan.
Could you summarize for me that the transition plan and the amendments that you suggested?
The transition plan for me is to recommend that we wait and do it effective in July twenty twenty four so that I can budget for our new position in the park cemetery. And at that time, we would have been able to get the ordinance change to include the animal control officer under the supervision of the public works director.
And that's the only amendment that you guys saw that?
Yes.
Okay, so again, we're looking into the future. When you say a position for the cemetery, that could just be an hourly employee. You don't need to make a supervisor over the cemetery.
I'm not having a position.
You just said a position over the cemetery.
A position that's called the semi part cemetery that's a lead person. They do not have supervisory.
They don't have what?
They don't have supervisory roles. All our lead people are in the meeting, they're just leading the department.
So how, I'm going to back to, how am I going to make a motion tonight or table this? Because I do want to, I think this needs to happen. I also think it should happen through the budgetary process and get ready for advertise next June or May when everyone advertises because this, this new role will take effect and it's part of the code up there, ordinance. The new code will take effect in July one, twenty twenty three. So there'd be a twenty twenty three, twenty four budget and that's, that's what I'm comfortable with tonight. So can we make that part of that motion?
Well, my whole point of being on the soapbox about this is I don't believe Councilwoman Jerry doesn't understand the whole thing. She needs to be educated. She said that time and time again. You and I have been around here a long time. Ernie does a lot of listening, absorbs it and he comes out probably the next meeting with it. Again, you know, I think, I, I just, it would just been so much nicer, this is what I find, like she just said, budget time, we're going to leave the parks or a cemetery person there and we'll wait and see what's going to happen. I'm sitting here staying awake thinking, what's going down on this whole thing, you know, because once again, and I, I hated this thing and, you know, it, it's not hated, you know, it's, it's a fallback or five years experience. That's a lot of difference than some guy going to college for ten years, getting a bachelor's degree, a master's degree in engineering and so forth. You know, this is the one, you know, the one thing I had, it's like it's being custom design, which I mentioned in my email.
Which?
Almost every one of our, of these actual employees has an exception for, for instance.
I wouldn't have my job if I didn't have that exception. And so I'm having a hard time with that one. But, once again, I've given you this. If we need to put this off, feel free. Jerry Lynn, you know my door is always open. My phone is free to call me for any questions you might have. I can educate you all you want.
I would like to suggest.
Before you say that.
Please.
A councilwoman who can, who like I can speak out please and thank you.
Because everybody has a, has a bone or a dog. I, I think what every single person is saying is legitimate. And as for me, I think what we're just really asking for is everything that you've just said in writing and maybe a couple of us sitting down with that because some things do swirl around my head. I mean, I understand, but I don't understand because there's history that I am unaware of. So, um, I, I see what, I see what everyone is saying. I think we just need to write this out immediately. Talk about it before we break back now, just to make sure everybody.
What you're saying, just talk her out of it.
So I'd like to suggest the council would take a suggestion for me would be, I, I suggest that they make the motion to have this in writing, as Councilman Allworth suggests, but I, the details, I mean, there's details like I'd like to see the summary of what is the current pay ring we have for this position. The timeframe, any budgetary considerations you'd like to put in such as hiring another person. We can have that all just written out and distributed to the council for discussion at the next meeting if they have other questions. I think that's the best, I think that is the best.
I think that's a good idea because that's, that's just every, everybody's got a piece of something and, and everybody's saying something that is relevant, so let's just put it all down.
Together with the current suggestion about the animal control and any other amendments there and then the council could proper any amendments that they want.
Sure. I, I absolutely totally agree with that. But I mean, I think a really simple thing would be to bring us back with the new additions that were on there so we can see like the, the code and describe them on there and put that in a different print or font. So this is.
How do we have any other possibilities here?
What, what do you know, what are amendments or what? You know, this document is old. The reason, prior recall, there's no animal control list in this because the county was the animal control. You know, so you're, we're, we've got to add that too there. But I like partly Jerry Lynn's comment, sit down, go with it. You go through these, one, two, three, all the way down to wherever it is, thirteen of them, there needs to be some discussion on what's going on here or what's expected.
And that's fine, we can discuss that next week.
The three of you went through that. Okay, so let's, okay, let me ask a question. You said you met with, with Mike. Okay, item number three, coordinate city engineering activity and project with appropriate federal, state, county, and related agencies. How has he done that? You know, maybe I'm asking.
Coordinates with BJ. He was asked about all these. I'm not saying that all of them fall into it. He meets the requirement of most of them. He's worked with O N S.
Okay, I, we don't need to get in job, we don't need to get in job performance, but right there is a prime example.
That is not.
You can't get the individual.
We are not talking about this job performance.
Two, every one of them is right here. That's the kind of, don't you walk away from that.
I put a mic over here.
Mr. Mayor, we need a point of order. She is an appointed official, she has due responsibility to address this council's concerns as HR director. I do not appreciate her walking away from the podium.
It's, it's noted. What, what else do we have to discuss now about, about this?
So can we be clear about what our written report needs to say though? Because this was a pretty simple report. It can be initiated. There's one change that needs to be made to the code and it should be on the next fiscal year. I don't really know what needs to be in the report for.
Like I heard, I, I think a summary needs to be made for the benefit of the council members so they don't have to run around and find each of this, each of these items specifically, like I said. I think this needs to be included. I think the pay ring needs to be included. I think the dates and the issues about the union agreement need to be addressed and right in there so that the council can understand that and just, just summarize that in writing so that it can be added to, as Councilman Allworth suggests, or if he'd like to make some amendments there. And where we have some time to do this, if you recommend it, and I think the council seems to be able to that, if this doesn't happen until next fiscal year, is that there's some time to kind of wrap this around a little bit, especially if there's concerns about qualifications or job description, that is, that may need to be added or subtracted or whatever we need to do on that. But I think that is the, I think that, that's the wish of the council, if I've summed that up correctly.
For, for future reference, the code under city attorney specifies that the council may direct me to draft up written responses. So in the future, if you'd like a response, maybe, you know, let, put that on the agenda so that I'm aware or.
And they can, they're within the rights to request that tonight on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
They're within the rights to request that tonight on the agenda item.
Right.
To table the decision.
Yeah, and we can write on it for the next.
Let me address what the council is asking. So if we want to have an issue such as this, we ask him? No, we ask the HR director. She's the one who's got the training education to talk about manpower. I don't need the attorney to sit on her behalf.
What I meant was just in general, under the attorney section of the code specifies that, I don't know if it does under HR.
Well, I think the council can request for me an appointed official.
Correct.
Anything. Exactly. I think that's, that's, that's appropriate. Okay. If that's the case, I would undertake a motion that table and decision of the item requesting a written summary of the, of the plan and any pertinent issues that the council can.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion from Councilman Allworth, do I have a second?
Just a second.
What? No, before we go, we're going to need a second before this.
I need a second before this.
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks.
So with this, we will have an opportunity, um, so there's great clarity in getting the agreement when we see this again, to have this reported enough time or whatever, so we can call and say, I want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm reading so we don't do this again. So by the time.
We've got a little budget period.
I think a lot of work to be done on that. That's why I think it should be done as part of the budget, but also it's a code change. And one of the things to be discussed was the exempt employee status of all these job descriptions we have in the code. Only one of them says it's an exempt employee. Well, this one would be exempt employee once we did it, so I think that needs to be worded in there. And I think I could show you the, the, that so.
I feel like there's two issues here.
I think that.
They came up with the plan, granted it was short and sweet, but then you also have the issue that to me is separate was we were already had a committee together that's going over the revising, possible revisions of the ordinances.
The, the job description.
Job, I'm talking to the order to this.
Okay.
Well, they are part of the ordinance. The ordinance gives you your job description for the kind of decision.
Okay. So I, I think that gives time for both those processes to kind of.
And just as a note, I will not be here the next meeting, I'll be at an HR conference in right here.
So.
Whatever, I think we need to.
It's not going to take more than a week to get that happening.
Because if that's, so I'm also going to be at the second meeting because I'll be coming back from Salt Lake from the Cassell conference. October is pretty booked for me, but I mean, that, that's not a solid meeting and we later open for me, but I'm planning because it's short and sweet.
So that's going to give the council members at least a solid month for you that information, kind of those any suggested edits they want and have that back on the agenda. Absolutely.
I think when you have an email, tell us to, a copy of them, asking for any suggestions or things that you want added or subtracted on those. So that's part of the community that's going on that.
So we have a motion from Councilman Allworth and a second from Councilwoman Williams. Is there any discussion? All in favor of, uh, table? Any opposed, carried this over. Uh, we're on item ten, Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action adoption of the E Lee redevelopment district facade improvement incentive program.
Hey, Kyle.
I'm back.
Back to me. I looked through several meetings with the group on this right here. Kyle was eventually the grand robber in leader, so it's yours, buddy.
All right, thank you. Uh, it was a month ago, I was in here talking about how Main Street was going to apply for the T-Mobile hometown revitalization grant and we were looking at proposing a facade improvement incentive program. Well, before I could write the grant, uh, we needed to have a facade improvement incentive program. So that's why I reached out to Councilman Allworth and then other members of the community as well, um, including, uh, Craig Peterson and Leo Kahoon here to kind of take a look at what this would look like. So we pulled this template from three different communities that were Main Street communities that successfully administered a program like this. And so it mirrors that program. Of course, it's been edited to be custom for specific for E Lee. Looked over it a number of times, not saying this is a perfect document, but certainly something that we're going to need to show that the, the city is behind this incentive improvement program. Certainly good for business, certainly good for tourism, the property owners, the, the businesses that are to move in there. Uh, and this, in its current state, does not ask or require any money from the city of E Lee. So this is funded through, uh, three different grants and a line item through tourism. And so that would be a funding source for this. And then if the program, if, if we decided that this was something that wanted to continue, then of course those, those conversations would continue at that point. But we're looking to get, if all goes well, fifty thousand from T-Mobile hometown revitalization, twenty-five thousand from Nevada Main Street when that grant opens up. Main Street's also going to be applying through Great Basin Heritage Area for a grant to support that. And we have a historic asset preservation line item that we would dedicate to the, for this program.
It's the E L. Court in the true.
Oh, and E L. Court as well. So we're looking, honestly, again, if all goes well, the program will have over a hundred thousand dollars in it that the city and the, the, the committee that would oversee this would be able to use to, to choose what projects that they wanted to support. And so some of the highlights of that is we're looking at a cap of twenty thousand dollars, uh, that any property owner could apply for that would deal specifically with facade. So this would be awnings, signage, windowsill painting, thermal windows, architectural elements. It would not include anything on the inside of the building. And so at that point, you'll see, you can kind of see the, the stipulations that come along with that, the amount of years that they have, um, before they can reapply again, the requirement to keep up with facade of their building. Uh, but, you know, this, this is, it's proven to attract business, to attract foot traffic and bring more people into the downtown, which of course is beneficial for everybody.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to question some of you, some of you, your funding because you have forty plus businesses and you got over a hundred thousand, maximum it's twenty thousand. So I give you five businesses to go for. Maybe six.
It would, they would, they apply now, they have to apply for an actual project, like they just can't apply for twenty thousand dollars.
Correct. This, this isn't. We're not, we're not planning every business in the redevelopment district.
It's just up to.
This is up to twenty thousand. This is seed money. This certainly isn't going to be the panacea that's going to save downtown. But what this is going to do is this is going to get a few businesses and business owners that have the potential to, uh, to improve their facade. It's going to lead by example.
But for example, I just want to run some hypotheticals out here. If I have a downtown business and I want to, I want to paint my windowsills, I could apply for this. Absolutely, that's an improvement. If I had a sign that needs repair, I would apply for it, but only in the amount of the repair. Like it's going to cost me two thousand dollars to pass over this.
Correct.
You're going to consider that.
Absolutely.
Well, you throw in that windows, the thermal windows and stuff, it's going to eat that up fast.
It's certainly going to take more than a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, repair the deferred maintenance in downtown, but, you know.
I want to piggyback off of what Ed is saying. I would probably like to know that, um, you know, if I'm going to put a little bit in our business, maybe you'll give me some more because I think I wouldn't want to see this money because there isn't that much. Only go to a couple of people. I would like for downtown people to say, we all got a little piece of something. It's what, if what we put forward was worth it. I asked for two thousand, they gave me a thousand. So I mean, they have some responsibility in there too, um, or else this grant could be looked at. It was just, it was just only for a small few and maybe there was some favoritism. So I would really want this money to be spread out because it's not a lot of money.
Well, let me, let me, let me comment on both of those. If you do spread it out amongst all the businesses, it's even less money. So where, you know, a few businesses could, could really make an impact, um, spreading it out into everybody will make less of an impact. The other part is, is this is a selection committee. If you look in there, it's made up of representatives from the city, to Main Street, the downtown business community. That's who's selecting the projects based off merit. And at the end of there, you, you can see kind of the criteria that's used with scoring mechanisms. So it's certainly been worked in to try to avoid those types of things there. Uh, but like I said, I can't stress enough, this is the beginning of a program. It's certainly not a perfect program, um, but something where we have the opportunity to put some seed money into this. And again, a lot of it is, is leading by example. And when your neighbor paints their house and cuts their grass, it kind of puts the pressure on you to pick up their property too. And that's what we're hoping for is just, you know, getting the ball rolling. It would be amazing if this program continued for a number of years and was funded through another, other mechanisms too, so that it could help all the businesses in downtown.
And I agree, but I, I'm, I'm still going to repeat myself again, you know, my business is big and booming and, um, I still need some things to make it look nice. Ed's business is right next door and it's a, a little small business. I don't want to see me get the business because you think, you know, I want Ed to have, to have the opportunity to spruce up his place too.
Absolutely.
And maybe in some way, shape or form, he can prove, if you're going to give me a thousand, here's my other thousand to make sure.
Is there any matching requirements on this and seed money?
Right now, the committee that we work with, it was not working that there was any matching requirements. And specifically for the small business person who currently can't afford to start except their building, period, you know, twenty, twenty thousand dollars or five thousand or whatever without a match, I think that makes it a little bit more equitable to where the, the big businesses aren't only going to be. And then who, who administers all this paperwork? Uh, so the way it's been written right now is, is that this program is adopted by the city, but it's administered through a committee that's selected by the, the city and business. So I mean, there's that, there's some bookkeeping, who's distributing the checks, who's, who's, uh, who's accepting the applications, who's copying it for all the committee? As, as of right now, this is, this is a city program where no money is asked from the city, just time of administration.
I'm still, I'm still going to say again, um, because I think that this is pretty important and, and I know this is a big thing of ours too. You know, our downtown needs to look as good as it can, so I don't just want a few people to be able to do it and the smaller places not be able to do it. My strong feeling is if the city has to say okay to some of this, I want to see who we're saying yes to and giving them up to.
Absolutely.
And who's going to apply? I'm probably not going to apply for it. I mean, that's the choice they got, you know, why not apply?
I think, I, I think I'm totally in favor of this type of a program. Don't misunderstand me. And I think even more so because, and I, I said this two years ago when we started talking about this whole district being tore up, totally tore up, I think more than two years. Anyway, those small businesses are going to have their front doors shut for the, starting in twenty twenty four, this is bringing twenty twenty four. It's unbelievably important that we have those businesses looking, that they have the ability, you know, to stay open. I'm not sure how many is going to be able to stay open during, have all the sidewalks, all the street, all infrastructure, that is going to be tore up and that will be, there are probably going to be a big, what's it called, paycheck to paycheck. But, so I, I support this. I think the committee needs to also take a look at which businesses, which buildings could really help the community downtown if they apply, which, they got to apply, they got to apply. So I mean, maybe you only get five that apply. I mean, I don't know.
Because the, and I, I didn't see it in here, but I, I think part of that needs to be that this funding doesn't fund partial projects, it has to fund only like.
Absolutely.
They, the, the, the aspect that they're paying for has to be completely encompassed in that way. Because.
But they're not true. And plus what you're.
For example, to Jerry Lynn's point, if, you know, there's five businesses who are each doing huge facades and they each, huge facade projects and they each apply for twenty thousand dollars to pay for part of that, there goes all the money. But if someone's saying, I'm, I want you to pay for the painting or I want you to pay for this, then it goes further and more people get to put in and it kind of zeros in on stuff.
Well, if, if you guys look at the scoring in the back, that does take into account that all of that is weighted, uh, projects that are adjacent to parks, public spaces, projects that are adjacent to schools, projects that, that have the potential to have a bigger impact on others. So again, the, the selection committee is not, is not one person, it's not the city of E Lee, it's made up of representatives of the business community, the city, um, Main Street, and they're the ones that would select and present to the city council who they would like to see approved. So that, that is worked into the, the program as it is. Again, uh, just, you know, for, for who, who's been able to look at it and everything, not a perfect document, so we can certainly keep working on to put those, that wording in and those stipulations for sure. Um, I think the only timeliness would be the T-Mobile grant because the deadline is at the end of the month. Um, so I don't, I don't know what the possibilities are here. If it's something like we support this program with continued edits or with continued, um, work towards making it final or, or however that is, um, but I certainly don't feel comfortable applying for grants without, or some sort of, of city acknowledgement that this is a program that, that we want to try to pursue. Can I ask, if, if administering this kind of, is, is, is the workload you're looking here doable for us to be able to offer that as our, our, the, I don't know. The city has run up against this in some of our, our grant programs of, of, just a minute.
I think that's also a question of trust as far as.
Well, because you, you guys would be applying for the grants for the funding.
Yeah, Main Street would be applying for those grants. As, as a nonprofit, I feel like that would be.
So the check would come from Main Street and be administered.
To, to the city. Yes. I, you know, through talking with the different groups, it, we don't feel like the Main Street without the partnership of the city really should be administering this grant. It, it, this, this program truly is more of a partnership with everybody who has a stake in the game here to, to make the recommendation of how this is administered.
So you guys would be doing the grant, right? We'd be doing this, right? We'd first, would you?
Okay.
Yes.
Can all of us sit on this?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'd like to make a comment here. Having, I mean, quite a few years of experience with Main Street, U S date. I was a born parent in the U S and I worked for four different cities that we put together that made a request through Main Street, U S date. But that community had architects, lawyers, uh, accountants, everything you wanted, and we had a list of charities and foundations that they could go to get the monies to do what we had to do. It was administered within the community between a group of public officials, state county lawyer, we might have in the senior community, and the chamber of commerce. And in order to function properly, they had to work with those people, so accomplish what their desire was. But before we started one little project, we didn't, until the whole idea was totally complete, wherever you wanted to start and wherever you wanted to end. And that's when you put everything together and you start to reach foundations. Tonight, and I very, there's two very prominent foundations in the state of the government, the Apple Touch, one's a relative foundation. You can also go to the Guggenheim Foundation who created this area, which they brought the railroad in, they opened up the mine there and they developed all of that. And the Guggenheim Foundation is still.
Councilman Flaggers. If we could keep the comments just of this program.
Well, I, what I'm trying to say, the important fact here is get the entire concept put in in logic first before you even attempt to do one of these. Make sure you know what's going on.
I, I think what, um, the director is trying to say is that we need this program in place for you to apply for these funds.
Yeah, and, and honestly, there, there's only about one grant. I mean, from, from city representation that was here, we had Councilman Allworth, we had Mr. Kahoon and we had Mr. Peterson, all, all taking a look at this. So there certainly has been city involvement and Jerry Lynn, if you would like to come in, by all means, like, look at this and make, make recommendations because none of us have done a, a program like this before. We're literally just using the Main Street's template for other successful communities. And once, once we show success with this, you're right, Councilman Flaggers, we can apply for grants to all over the place. We just have some low hanging fruit that's available right now, but certainly, you know, I'll, I'll accept all feedback and go back. This is a working draft, it's probably in its sixth or seventh edition, um, and, and we can continue to fine tune this if, if, if that's the, the flavor of the council.
Attorney, it says there, it says the idea is adoption of the E Lee redevelopment district facade improvement incentive program. I don't know why we couldn't vote on that because the city won't be administering what?
The city won't be administering.
Yeah, the money part, so.
No, he said Main Street would be administering the money.
We, we would be.
They would be collecting money and we would, we would cut the check over to the city. The city would be taking the application.
Yes, that's why I think we didn't, it's kind of like a pass through grant.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, it's not that much.
No, it isn't. Okay, but then I'm going to, I think we should do this. And I, I tell you, I think we need to start this program because downtown is going to, it's already struggling. And it's going to really slow, come, next was it, probably February, March of '23.